I'd like to reconvene the meeting please. This is December fifth, 2016. Voting of the current consensus reported director. Thank you for sharing the reception and thank you to the kids again for a great performance. Moving on, we have a portion at the beginning of our meeting where we allow the public to make any comments on the agenda items on our meeting. Jennifer, does anybody want to speak on an agenda item? Saying no one indicate will move on. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty first Finance Committee meeting as presented and also the minutes of the November twenty first Regular Voting meeting as presented. Do I have some votes?
I see.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move the second to any exception? If not, the vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Close day. Motion carries. Abstentions for a reason that you are.
Madam President.
You were absent from meeting. Moving on, I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel issues. And I'll now turn to Dr. Piper for a good stream of reports.
Thank you. As we're moving on at this point in December, you know, I put attention to what's taking place in Harrisburg regarding the state budget. There've been preliminary reports that the state's looking at budget shortfall around five hundred million dollars. I don't know how it's going to affect our initial budget, but again, it's something as we move past January, we get into new legislation being seated, it's going to be something we're going to take a hard look at. That plus the nominated secretary for Department of Ed, Betsy DeBoss, it's going to be an interesting climate for us to keep working in the fall. So to me, that adds more urgency to our budget discussions and how we're managing not just our expenditures, but also how we're utilizing our revenues coming in. And I think moving forward, keeping that in forefront as we pay attention to Harrisburg as to what is going to come our way. I want to commend Bertie for the job he's done managing our budget currently and also the board by keeping the head of things and keeping us really in the forefront, forwarding to the new year. And it is, it's going to be, it's alarming to me to see that they're getting five hundred million dollar deficit at this point, the Harrisburg state revenue shutdown. Our revenues fed up locally, which has been nice, and our tax collection. So very grateful for that and appreciate now, come January, we'll take a look at where exceptions can be and what we can go from there. I had a chance to show a lot of you here, I had the opportunity to see the school fall drama that Ms. Jackson exposed upon our kids who were totally chopped to factory. That was a huge success with kids. I was here Sunday afternoon for matinee as for several people and for matination activities. And I was told from Michelle at the stadium Friday night. So it's just phenomenal, the job that the kids are doing in those areas. Their sports is really glowing, their Keystone exams are taking place. You know, I call them all, it's removing now middle school year and I think Mr. Lock was very excited with the first donations. And why I'd like to turn over you this for a quick little because I see you have PowerPoint ready to go. So.
Take away. Thank you, Dr. Piper. Just wanted to give a precursor to the PowerPoint. I made that while wearing our sandwich. It's, Dr. Piper really gave us direction this past year to really focus on reaching out to the community. And we had a wonderful opportunity. Ms. Isabel Ford, she works at PNC and she knows a couple of the floors were closing. She inquired about some of the things. Cut a lead on this company called Greenstandard.org and their mission is to handle lean fills. So she said, hey, can you check this website out and give us a question and email? So we did. And what this company does is they take furniture from businesses and then donate it to nonprofits and there is absolutely zero charge. So we were able to obtain one hundred and eighty-three stack of chairs and fifty tables, two podiums, seven or eight desks, big desks with touches, and a number of other things which I'll, which I, if I could, yeah, if we put that on there, I gotta stand up. So I went through this afternoon and looked at some of the things and I priced them what they would cost if we purchased them new. The fifty table, computer tables we got are about four hundred dollars each, so it's twenty thousand dollars. The hundred and ninety pass chairs, those are chairs on wheels, pad adjustable. I put them in about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and thirty-five dollars each. So the total will be about thirty-three thousand dollars if we bought them new. We have wonderful new wooded waiting area chairs for the front office, guidance office, and nurses offices, and they're all uniform, they're all the same pattern. And I put them at about a hundred dollars each. Hundred and ninety stacking chairs and some of them are back behind you. And I put them at about eighty dollars each comparables. Seven large beautiful wooden desks with hatches. Gets uniformly in the offices. And I found the cabinet, they were about twenty, they were about fifteen hundred dollars per desk. Two podiums with electronics inside, which our partnership with Parkway, they're going to paint one black and restate the other, hopefully put the logo of Carlton on the podium that Dr. Piper suggested. Currently, we got ten new chairs for teachers and their minimum of about two hundred dollars each. These are the chairs with all the kinds of adjustables and it was, I felt like Santa Claus early. Giving the teachers the chairs is great. Seven boardroom chairs for our guidance conference room where we have a lot of IEP meetings, practicing uniformity through the space, which you'll see. Portable whiteboards which stand on an easel. We have five, one for each apartment. And those were two hundred and sixty-five dollars each new. And then we had three round tables and I just estimate five hundred dollars each. That's just the first page. Two refrigerators, three credenzas, four folding plastic tables for athletic events or other events that we have, like the concert that's coming up for the elementary school, we could probably use those in some regard. Ten wooden folding tables for a grand total of ninety-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I want to thank Dr. Piper for giving us the green light to go ahead and go after it because you don't know what you're going to get, so you just have to kind of ask for everything. And the logic behind it was if we ask for more than the movers are only going to have to make one stop. And they delivered the first load and I went and I spoke to the mover and I said, hey, thanks a lot for coming, this is great, you're making it better. I said, hey, is there any chance I could come down and see what else is down there? Yes, well, we're not really supposed to do that. You see how happy those kids were? So he said, four o'clock, come on down to the PNC tower. So I got to go down PNC tower and get some more pieces to get assigned initially, I think. And I have costs, uh, zero. The only cost we have is some of the furniture that we got, we don't want to put in. So we can get, we can discard that. A dumpster costs four hundred dollars. We filled one dumpster with old tired furniture and four furniture that we bought that was not uniform. So this is a picture of a room prior to, this is what you would see in the building in a lot of the rooms. You see a lot of different chairs, different styles, though the table is actually a new table that I just, they put up there today and I'm going to put new chairs around it because we have them. But you can see the different tables. There's right there, there's three different styles of tables and then about four other styles of chairs. So we wanted to create an atmosphere where we have a little more uniformity and there is a flow to it. There's another table and another, yet another different chair. There's an example of one of the rooms that we started last year. It's Mrs. Jones' room right here, it's a science room. All of the tables here are all brand new from the donation and so are all the chairs. And I think the picture says a thousand words, so I say. There's an example of one of the desks down in the office area. It's a beautiful piece of furniture. This is what I'm really most excited about is the conference room, so we have all the IEPs because this is an area where a lot of traffic comes. And generally speaking, people are a little bit nervous when they come in there initially because they're talking about their child and they want it to seem feel comfortable. So the more comfortable we can make the space, and I want to thank Brian for setting up the LCD projector in there, she can project the IEPs right there and the team works on it together. And now we have, there's another chair, we have seven uniform chairs that match the table. And we also, the table in the corner was from the donation as well. It's an example of two chairs that we got that is put into guidance room for students when they come down to speak. Guidance counselor, it's clean, it's sharp, and it's improved. These are the two chairs for examples of same style of chair out in the front, there are four. This is the guidance wing. I didn't have an opportunity to get a picture of the ones that are in the front office as well, but they're all uniform. So that when I went down there, I said, there were a multibar of the same tests. Is there any chance that you can give me all the same pattern as we go through so it looks like we ordered that? I said, absolutely. So I was happy about that. And then, so that's, that's all I was able to get uploaded in the OS screen. Also, in the front office, when you come in and you sign in, we've got a beautiful credenza. I don't even know how to price it. It has green marble pop on top of it and everything that needs to be in that area is in there. So the first thing you see is a beautiful piece of furniture with a chair here and a chair here and then a nice storage area, one of the, I don't know what they call it, what are those boxes for, uh, covered with, cube, cube with the backpack program. So when the students receive the backpacks, we just push them out right out, but who knows they're going out. So extremely excited and I really want to thank Dennis and the maintenance staff for their work in putting all this together and Dr. Piper for letting us go after this because I really believe that this is the element, the kids were extremely excited about moving and replacing some things and making it a little bit nicer. A good comparison, and I'll be happy to say for anybody that wants to, is this is one of the rooms that we completely redid, Mrs. Jones' room and Mrs. Glasspool's room. One that I'm going to try to get, but I think I have twelve more tables. I know I have chairs. And you can see the difference and you can have an actual feel of the difference in the loading of plans. And I believe you're going to play the way, if you look like a champion, you're going to play like a champion. And I think that it's going to have a tremendous impact on the learning of the kids who are going into the crowd to show for. So that was one part of my report.
I have a question or suggestion.
Yes.
It could be that the more public parts of our school, the taxpayers would think we're spending too much money on furniture. Put little index cards, they're saying this was donated, that you're hostile, so we don't have to.
Great.
Big fan, like on the web page, big thank you to Greenstanders in PNC.
So was really excited about that. In fact, that was a lot of Friday was running around making that happen and having a lot of fun doing it because it brought a lot of joy to a lot of people in the building. Another thing that I wanted to be sure to point out, the community celebration and the work that students and teachers did on putting on the breakfast with Santa. It was a wonderful event, a true community celebration. They transformed the building so that others could see what I'm lucky to see every day and that's the magic that goes on in the building and the sense of humor that people have towards one another. And I was extremely impressed coming in today, the building was spotless. I brought my children up here and they had a blast. My daughter wanted to know what Yelp was going to say to Santa when I got home. And then also, the thing that I also thought was extremely impressive was the things that the students were doing during the breakfast with Santa. There were kids cleaning tables, can I get you something to drink? Can I take this plate for you? Making the crafts with children. All of the things that you would hope as a parent to see your students, your children doing and experiencing and being led by other students. And I really think that that is a true tribute to the teachers that were involved, have involved here at the time. And then finally, in terms of academics, we're extremely excited about the approval of our Ready to Learn grant, which is going to be able to build upon the work that Mrs. Steiner's been doing with Carnegie Mellon and Fluency Grant, hopefully creating a position for the second semester as a coach through the Ready to Learn grant, also building upon the robotics club that we, Mr. Harris started. As I understand, all of the components of the grant will approve and so those will not tax us, but I don't really understand the monitor as much as some, but there's a fever going around right now and it's not the one that knocked me out. So it's, we're excited to hear a lot of extremely enthusiastic people right before break. Mr. Lock, Chris, Miss Grouse.
All right. Thanks for letting me follow you back. So a lot of great things happening in Crafton, not in furniture, but this month marks the hour of code, so that's something our students will be focusing on and it's actually this week. So if you look at the last page, well, second to last page in the newsletter, we feature what each grade level is on doing, we're thinking the hour of code and creating a sophistication that fits their age. So anything from K-10, who I thought was, they came up with a great lesson, using the binary alphabet, they're taking that and creating braces with E's and they're making holiday work. So sure words like elf, something like that, and they're making those. To using a lot, if you go on code.org, there are a lot of inspirational videos that teachers are using to start the hour of code, showing them what it is, showing them how other students are using it, and then going into some sort of activity. Tinker.com, I think it is, is one that a lot of, a lot of teachers are using, especially in the autistic support classroom, there's one really cool coding program that just does it, uses a puppy. And you can have the puppy fetch, beat, run. So it goes from something simple like that to create, you know, programming droid, 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 Star Wars activity that fifth grade is working on. So they're pretty excited about the hour of code and hopefully lots of pictures for next newsletter to show you how they've kind of progressed with that. And then just a lot of things happening in Crafton and Carnegie in December, from our chorus concert on Friday to like Mr. Peterson earlier said about the band concert coming up. Crafton does have Matt Tevo coming at the end of December and he'll bring in the diversity of African due cheerbands and he'll perform and listen questions about some of the instruments that he'll bring in that he's used in Africa. And then progress reports went home today. Thankfully, I didn't have to bother Brian. We actually did it without any problems at Crafton, so we were really excited about that. And then, yeah, so I mean, that's a big step because the first progress report, I think I texted you every day for like two weeks, trying to make sure everything got published quickly. And it, it went, got hitched this time. So a lot of, a lot of good things in the busy month for, for Crafton.
Turn now to Dr. Magus.
The only report for our people services is just the amount of reports that we have due within the next month, both in terms of the school psychologists and special education and five oh four gift evaluations, but also two major reports specifically the Medicaid cost reimbursement report, which we actually submitted in the mail address to make sure that we're good and non-NERs. And then also the contingency funds report, which I mentioned last time, just looking at the cost to educate some of our students with extraordinary needs. We've had so far four students that we submitted for, I don't know what they're worth, so the cost to educate, you know, totaling over seventy thousand dollars. So let's hope so. Other than that, we're just trying to get the December first project finalized and some of the work that's going to be done with Brian, I mean, as he's on top, they're, they're stepping up to me, so thank you guys.
Hillary, real quick, sorry. Following up on Marcia's comment about the system working well, do you guys even continue to see good things from the system or there's still issues that need to be ironed out?
Under reporting, there are some glitches.
Are we making the right people aware of it and getting help from the manufacturer?
Yes.
December thirteenth, fourteen, December. Question. Dr. Piper, question.
Just keep, like, Keith, I mean, Brian's one guy's been giving so much.
What's happening there?
Okay, thank you for your continued support, Brian.
Mr. Mc.
Thank you. Just one thing I want to report is, like Dr. Piper said, we're going to be doing the winter administration, the Keystone exams on January thirteenth, seventeen, eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. We're going to be doing the algebra on the thirteenth. We have approximately twenty students that need to be tested at that time. Biology is going to be on the seventeenth. We have about ten students who are going to be testing at that time. Literature is going to be on the eighteenth, we have five students who will be testing. And we were asking about the assist system. It's just basically, you know, the original law, we're still trying to wade our way through different reports are due through him. We're finding that things they will override, there was some areas that's not, so we're just driving our way through, getting these things up.
Big picture, we're going in the right direction.
We're, we're going in the right direction, you know, the cooperation between Brian and Kristen Vaughn and even Michelle Weaver stepping up, you know, with her expertise and between all of us working with the team, we're, we're in the right way.
And if at any point you need, you need more, you'll raise your hand and talk to Dr. Piper.
Just come in. Yes, sorry. So Director Shaw and I were kind of pondering, let me say, for instance, twenty kids are going to be retaken in the art school, Keystone, are they all from one grade or are they from extra grades? Because we, the kids take that in eighth grade, is that correct?
Not all.
No.
A, a big portion of the number are going to be probably from the eighth grade. What took place in summer was when we got the school back early July with Mr. Lockren, you know, we kept, we got together and said, well, we're going to be very flexible in how we can provide supplemental instruction for the students. There was a group of eighth graders, which is going to be the largest group that we had there, and we offered them an opportunity to bypass the fundamentals classes that they would, one option was to, to work through so many lessons through a cellist in a discipline and.
That's what you were talking about?
Yeah. And then somebody else's offer, option to take the Apex Learning, which is a more of a, a computer adaptive type where if they take a pre-test and they've already demonstrated matching skill, they don't have to provide a lesson on that. So we have some students doing those as well. So the students that have completed the supplemental instructions are the ones that are going to be tested at these particular points. So most of them are going to be, I can say, the eighth grade algebra scholars kids, I lose, there's a big portion of them, but they're not all eighth graders, there's some ninth graders in there as well. So in tenth graders as well, so it's not all one degree. Now, the literature, they call eleventh graders. So they'll, they'll be taking, they'll be eleventh graders, but they don't take the test until they're tenth grade. Biology's maybe more than tenth.
Mr. McDavid, is he able to be here this evening? So first, Mr. McDavid.
First off, I'll take a little bit on the East School things. A lot of the things that we're seeing are stuff that didn't, you know, didn't come over correctly in the rollover. More of that, you know, the registrar and the rest of us just didn't know where, like, certain things may be noted or, you know, some may have been entered in other places for it to go and say it's important. So we are cleaning those up and learning our, our lessons as we go along. As Mr. Lockren said, on December thirteenth and fourteenth, we're going to have a trainer on site here with us. He'll be working mostly with the high school principals and the guidance department. We're trying to find the live transcripts and make sure that we have everything, exactly what we need from transcripts and any other marketing reporting that appeals. So they'll be here your entire, entire day supporting with us.
Would it make sense to have all the team pull together, one big list of all the things that you want to stay on, you want to get action on and make sure that we?
Yeah, we are in kind of order, sorry. So. So the other thing I have is over Thanksgiving break, we had the Wilson group that we renewed the contract with last meeting. We had them replace the large copiers over at Carnegie and Crafton, two smaller units. They seem to be working well. Crafton, some of the work on the one copier, a little chip of power in that room, so working with Mr. McDavid on that. But so far, so good.
I was trying to quickly interrupt. Marcia, do we need to retrain the staff at all to know what we have and why we have it and what's the thinking behind the different setup?
Not necessarily. About the training, I could ask Bertha Hopier-Ain and then a couple other teachers to see if they kind of were figuring it out, comfortable. If they needed any trades, let me know. Nobody's reached out to me, so it seems pretty self-explanatory. And I know I talked to you about both copiers right now are in the same place, so I don't know if we can separate them somehow. Just logistically it would be easier. I don't know if that will help with the power problem that you're having, but that's something we can talk about. But it's, they're smaller, so they're not like the monster that we had. So this is going to take, you know, a little time to use too, but I haven't heard of any issues like.
Yeah, the screens, the menus and everything are all the same as they were on the dual models, all the features are the same. It's really, probably the, probably the aide there that probably has to take care of Jan is probably the biggest learning curve, just trying to figure out the paper path where it goes and how to jam it. They are willing to come and train, so I just hope that the principals will let me know. We are going to be replacing the copiers at the high school, I'll go to plan third day after school. And then we'll be discussing the printer rollout as well, so the printer's going to be good. So hopefully that actually, the printer went out actually for the break, so we can print out the pictures because we're really, we're printing out the pictures on a nice big little piece. So they were, they ran us one last second on Friday up here, that was nice. Yeah, it's really all I have.
One last question for you. Previous meetings you brought up the need to replace some of the, you know, metal to have, the recommended chromers at one point. I think I and others suggested we wait a little bit, that maybe the need is more urgent. Is that on your radar screen or are we?
Right, we're, we're in the process of that, particularly at the Carnegie Elementary.
Yeah, we'll be working on replacing some of them.
Like, I don't want to speak for the board, but hey, we're at least, we'd be willing to listen to proposals, especially given the information that Kirby gave back, that we were very conservative with expenditures last year, so maybe there's a little bit of cushion in the interest of the parents.
And the money that was allocated, I did, I did budget for most of these things and so we could still be within the money, so it was what I was, correct, crewed, so no one's really going out for any, we put a lot of that in, at least the beginnings of this season.
Get back to your reports.
Moving on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda, we have July, so I'll entertain a motion to approve additions to the 2016, 2017 conference and field trip requests as submitted. We have such a motion.
Can we add such a motion?
Second.
Second. Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye? Motion carries. On your section number two finance, we have two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, December twenty sixteen, real estate tax refunds for Borough of Crafton presented. And number two, December twenty sixteen, real estate tax refunds from Borough of Carnegie, as presented. Do I have a section motion? Ooh, I have second.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Uh, so I don't have a sheet for, uh, for.
Kurt, you know, the document.
It was a lot. You said for Crafton?
Yeah.
No, I don't have it.
Sorry, push up.
It was under a thousand dollars.
Under a thousand, okay.
What was it for?
Under. Any other questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye? Motion carries. Under section three personnel, we have one item, I want to entertain a motion to approve the addition to the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen G A D A sub to do list as presented. Can we add such a motion? Ooh, I have second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye? Motion carries. Uh, under old business, does any director of any old business they would like to discuss? If not, we move on. Any director of any new business they would like to discuss? Very remember, we move on. Open forum, any member of the public having the open forum might have to like to ask questions and comments. Can I stretch?
That's, that's a plea for a little bit of support.
Okay.
Now, and keep, in keeping with, uh, I want to introduce one of our finest seniors. So, Warren, uh, was at the bonfire, she helped organize the bonfire this year with a bunch of other student leaders. It was the second senior that we did. Yes, uh, and said, you know, she wants to leave a mark on the school. And was trying to think of some creative ways and wish to do it. I mean, a wonderful conversation, she wanted to highlight just a couple of the ideas, uh, maybe this could be a traditional start to the building, you know, launch some alternative ideas.
So, Mr. Lohgren gave me this suggestion of pamphlets. That, I, I, but apparently I was one of the only ones who didn't have a pamphlet. So he told me, it'd be like the senior class, each one, person in a senior class, would put their handprint on it. And he said, "Could you put it in a form of like quote or something?" And I said, "Well, I don't know any quotes that would really symbolize like the entire senior class, like everybody would agree with." So then I got the thinking, and I talked to my other fellow seniors and my idea was to put class of in solid letters. And then the outline of all the senior class, which is number thirteen. And then they would put their handprints in the twenty seven. To symbolize the class of students.
Where would you want to have that presented?
So, we also talked about this a lot. And I don't know how you guys get up to the library for using these, but the stairwell right next to the guidance office is very light and very boring and very boring. So, that was my idea, but it would be a perpetual, um, so we could put more classes right into each other.
I think it's a decision that, that's a point your superintendent would make, but I think we're supportive of the idea of, A, your involvement, and B, the idea of writing and searching out.
So Warren was, uh, selling herself short a little bit, because she also reached out to Mr. McDavid and proposed the idea to Mr. McDavid. He then approached me and I said, "Well, Mr. McDavid," and I said, uh, "I wanted, I wanted to get some leadership experience in, in reaching out to you." And he said, "Well, as long as you're, uh, supportive of it, I'm, I'm in favor of it." And so that is where we are in this, uh, planning stages of it. And, uh, if it's something that, uh, I think we put a nice splash or a print, uh, on the building and then you could come back and see, hey, this is where we were. Maybe there's a phrase that could incorporate something into the design about who your class is as a whole.
Yes, nice, nice idea. Aye.
Yes, John.
Thanks.
Are there any other college or questions from the audience for the book?
I just want to say, we'll pay Brian's, we'll pay the school messenger and, uh, our app and website, improve. And we're setting up a few Google, a little system. Um, so it'll be a little more advanced than we own to soon to use it. Plus it has an option, if we've reached a college who doesn't want to get the call, they can opt out. But it cancels that, we're directly within the system, so we won't be making the same, like, thousands. So it's gonna be great. I'm getting traded next week, um, and we'll be ready to get.
So it'll still be your voice? Sixty one?
Thank you. Any other open forum members from public or board members?
Uh, just wanted to, uh, talk briefly about the Ready to Learn grant. Couple other components that we're pretty excited about is the home visitor, um, uh, this year for the grant. And also the mentoring project, and the mentoring that we offer our students to draw in more community members. And we've got a team of teachers working extremely hard in creating this, and it's gonna be on three levels. One level will be part of the storytellers, one large group assembly involved in the Lord and the Spring. The second is, uh, recruiting community members, uh, to support with the small group of students, maybe six to eight. Maybe there are two mentors and they go to the community and learn about, uh, career development and also more, and or also to make an improvement to the communities that live. And third would be, um, a, someone that might be a little longer to do, even more time. We have a weekly check-in to expose our students to career and college options, uh, at the third level. Uh, we've partnered with, uh, uh, actually a parent of, uh, Mr. Scott Albert, who works for, uh, Bridges Program. Uh, and he's met with about a hundred and eighty students, uh, as a part of the bringing people into the building. And to talk about careers and potential, it's called the Be All You Can Be program. And then they're going to have one speaker a month come in and speak to our students. And we're gonna utilize the Cooper Collaboration Center that we, uh, designed for the fourth last year. And the times in which the speakers come is dependent upon their schedule, so. Uh, Mrs. Gattuso is also working with a local engineering firm, trying to, uh, get them interested in service and, and providing people to expose our students to careers and everything. So it's very exciting and, um, we're really enthused about all of our things that are, that are, that are.
Any other forum votes? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have second. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye? We are adjourned.